No. Whoops. You know. This thing used to sort of dry. We're in a call to order.
I can't hear you. No one can hear you.
We're in a call to order. This is the May 17th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Sarah, if you can call it all, please.
Do I do the pledge?
Pledge first. Let's do that. Pledge, agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Sarah, if you could.
Mayor?
Here.
Gorflette?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Johnson?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
And I show Lathrop is excused and Carol will be a few minutes late.
Looking for approval of the minutes, if there are any, no changes to the minutes?
So move.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye. This takes us to first public comment. Sarah?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4 Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Is there anybody that would like to make public comment?
My name is David Makowski. I live at 1474 Driftwood Drive here in Tallahassee. Geez, Tallahassee. That was Freudian slip. That's where I came from.
That's because it's 81 today.
From Traverse City. I submitted to each of the Commissioners something that's not a new idea. This isn't a novelty. But I took this a step further as a concerned citizen and a taxpayer for Traverse City. And somewhat resplendent timing, it was in the paper today about looking for alternative methods to look for revenue streams in our beloved county and try to find a way to reduce the MERS debt by other means rather than through a bonding issue or taxing us again or whatever. And so I would like to recommend to you the 47 acres out at the Civic Center. This is a very unpopular topic for some of us that enjoy running, which I do. So you're speaking to the choir here, but at the end of the day, it's a 47-acre nugget that's two and a half miles from here. It's -- what you have before you, in front of you, is just a layman, quick and dirty suggestion of how we could take many of the folks, what I consider to be silent majority, people in this town who you're not going to hear from. But I can tell you that the list is long, who say that it's long overdue that we take a look at an alternative revenue stream that sits right before us here. There's a mixed usage of commercial, residential, and public park that would stay, the sanctity would stay in place. The long bars that you see in green are residential housing suggestions. The small little squares align Front Street from the old Arby's down to about 100 yards west of Fair Street. That angled building, that L building that's recommended there would be a shopping center that would, it could complement and go quite nicely what they're calling target density, where you're taking mixed-use opportunities that could appeal to not only the millennials, college students, young married folks just starting out, divorcees, who are looking for some affordable housing close to the CBD, close to downtown. It all fits nicely. And in the middle of all of this, everything stays intact. The baseball fields stay there. We could move the tar trail, or the trail that goes around it, which I use. You move it inside the green space. So everything stays just exactly the way you see it. The only things that would come down are the things that I think would be relatively unpopular, which are the swimming pool and the ice hockey rink. But if you think about moving those to a place, this would do a couple of things. I think just on its surface value, there's more than enough money here to pay for the MERS deficit and maybe put a surplus in place where you could move the pool and the ice hockey out to another part of the county, maybe up where we play soccer right now. But I would ask you to, barring zoning approval and certainly in anticipation of that, I would ask that you at least consider this seriously and no longer have it be dialogue in the record eagle, but please, put together what I consider to be a committee that would go out and seriously look at this, appoint a committee to seriously look at this, and we could be out of debt very, very soon. And thank you to Mr. Menzel for all he's done to try to row the boat in very heavy seas. He inherited this mess. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Brenda Earl. I live at 124 East 17th Street here in Traverse City. And this has to do with the pension liability and how to fund it. First of all, I applaud the Commission's efforts to have an updated accounting of the county's real estate assets and the cost of maintaining these properties. I think that's just good business. However, in an effort to fund the pension, I believe it would be a mistake to sell green space and Lake Shore property so enjoyed by county residents. Once valuable green space and Lake Shore property is sold, it is an irreversible loss to the residents of this county and conflicts with the stated vision of this Commission, which is, as all of you know, and I quote, "A community that preserves the beautiful and healthy environment, making Grand Travers County a desirable community in which to live." In contrast, selling a bond to fund the pension would be a limited-term liability, as opposed to the irreversible loss of green space and Lake Shore property. A county where I worked for many years sold a bond to fund employees' retirement health insurance. I also worked for a nonprofit which sold a bond to take care of its pension liability. Both actions were highly successful, so I hope that you consider that option, perhaps among other options. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
My name is Joanne Sheard. I live at 3394 Holiday View Drive. And I'm here, piggybacking on Brenda. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I can see from what I read that we, as a county, are in acute fiscal distress. And so I'm speaking to using multiple strategies, not just one, to try to raise the necessary funds to reduce that debt. One of the strategies indeed might be the sale of some of our valuable parklands, which I consider to be the crown jewels of Grand Travers County. They provide space for the reduction of visual poverty, poverty? Well, that's a Freudian slip. They provide space for reduction of air and noise pollution and the preservation of soil free from asphalt and concrete. They offer space which, if sold, can never be replaced. And lastly, caring for our seniors at the pavilions is a mark of a compassionate society. I urge you to follow your hearts as well as your heads as you struggle to reduce this debt. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Martell. I live at 3535 Gray Lane in East Jordan, Michigan. Deputy Civil Counsel, were you on the phone with an AG and me the other week?
Sure.
At that meeting, Judge Polter recused himself, and I want to point out that the counselor was there. And last conversation on that hearing was Judge Polter hanging the phone up saying, "Take it up with the new judge." One of the things I want to point out is that the prosecuting attorney, and I gave you guys a piece of paper today, the Commissioners, the second paragraph in there, the first paragraph's my recommendations, the second paragraph is a Michigan law that enables you to separate yourself from counsel at the prosecutor level and hire a private attorney for your affairs. The reason I'm going to suggest that is in the newspaper article, it says here that the prosecuting attorney is going to rely on including eight terms and conditions of a resolution. Of course, the resolution was the '74 dedication of the Natural Education Reserve. There was a second dedication on July 4th, but what's interesting is the prosecutor failed to mention the two paragraphs I'm about to read to you in the two-page resolution. "Board Commissioner reserves the right to change the use of not more than 5% of the total area of public recreation uses if said use do not detract from or impair the remainder. No use shall hereafter be made of," I'm talking about the Natural Education Reserve land except as provided herein. "In a future Board of Commissioners wishes to depart from this dedication," remember there's the second dedication, "it may submit the proposed change to the voters of the county at a special or general election," oh, "where 2/3 of the voters are required to destroy the Natural Education Reserve." That was '74, but when '76 came, this was destroyed, and there was a new public dedication. We have a copy. They even put it in concrete like the Egyptians did, but it says, "The Natural Education Reserve is dedicated in perpetuity," that means forever, "by the people of Grand Travers County for nature, study, and quiet recreation." And the other thing that's the problem with the prosecutor is he, and maybe even the Conservation District, who made comments like, "We can't see how removing the dams would have an impact on the Natural Education Reserve." Remember, MSU had a $75,000 grant that did a holistic index quality assessment of the Grand Travers Natural Education Reserve and documented all of the resources that were dedicated to the public. And I point out, oops, one more thing here. One more thing and I'll leave, but look at my recommendations, but I want to read the Natural River Zoning Act. "Were it not for the Boardman and Saban Dams and a few other minor obstacles on the Lower Boardman River, the river between Brown Bridge Dam and its mouth would, without a doubt, be one of Michigan's finest steelhead and salmon streams. Its size, physical characteristics, and water quality compare favorably to the Little Manistee." However, this is the Natural River Zoning Act, removal of the dams would affect the county educational property. The county property, including the Boardman and Saban Dams and their impoundments, their impoundments were dedicated by Grand Travers County as a natural education due to their what? Unique habitats, soils, water, topography, forest cover, and wildlife. You've been lied to by your counsel.
If you can wrap it up, please.
I am. You've been lied to by your counsel. And take a look at our notes on what were proposed in there, but this Commission can be held responsible for destroying the public trust and the conditions of the federal grants that you received when you created the Natural Education Reserve, and those are before the federal prosecutor right now. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment?
I'm Joan Murray, 11299 Bluff Road, Traverse City. I didn't really prepare anything, so this is going to be short, and we'll see if it's sweet or not. But I wanted to talk about the pension situation. Obviously, it's serious. I'm not a financial expert, and I know, but I know enough to know that there's been a lot of controversy over the bonding, but I, as far as selling some of our most precious assets, and I realize a speaker the other day came up from the audience and apparently said, "Sell those precious assets." I think it just keeps, it keeps coming back in my mind to what Joanie Mitchell said. You don't know what you got till it's gone. And once it's gone, it's gone. That stands for the parkland and as far as the pavilions. I could wind up there. Any of you could wind up there. It's a really decent option when we all get to that stage of life and need something like that. And I would really hate to see this used as the way to solve the pension crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to make a comment? If not, we'll go on to approving the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or delete from the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda as presented?
I would like to remove then 10A and 13B from the agenda. Animal Control update is 10A, and Business Development and Codes update is 13B. We'll eliminate those.
Move to accept the agenda as amended.
Support. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Sarah?
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. All information identified on the consent calendar can be viewed in its entirety at A, receive and file. One, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes of March 16, 2017. Two, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission minutes of March 21, 2017. Three, Grand Travers Conservation District April report. Four, Grand Travers County Road Commission May report. Five, resolution of support to maintain the required funding of the MSU Research Station in Lelandaw County to assist with the eradication of the spotted winged joshphilia?
Very good.
Joshphilia.
Very nice.
Update in the matter of--
Bug, Mrs. Williams.
Six, update in the matter of Edwin Martell, Bill Lane et al., case number WRP 001528. Seven, staff report. B, approvals. One, April 2017 claims approval. Two, fiscal year 2017 budget amendment. Three, appointment of jury board member. Four, 13th Circuit Court Community Corrections acceptance and appropriate additional funding, appropriate additional funding.
Does anyone from the Commission or staff want to remove anything from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public want to remove anything from the consent calendar? If not, I'd like a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent calendar as provided.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to Special Order of Business, which there are no special orders. Nothing removed from the consent calendar department items. Circuit Court, Community Corrections.
Hi, I'm Shree Shival. I'm the manager of Community Corrections for the 13th Circuit Court. Every year, I need to come before the three county boards, Antrim, Grand Travers, and Lelandaw, to ask your permission to submit my annual grant to the Department of Corrections. There's nothing different in this grant this year. It's for $256,265. And so that's why I'm here for you tonight, is to ask if I can submit my grant.
Does anybody have--
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Community Corrections grant. This budget has been reviewed by the County Community Corrections Board, well, the Regional Community Corrections Board, and they have been approved, so.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We're very fortunate. Our Community Corrections Department does a great job for Lelandaw, Grand Travers, and Antrim County. They really do. I don't even know where our jail population would be without their help. And with the cooperation of the judges.
Yeah, we had 73 people out of the Grand Travers County jail today, when I counted that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Shree.
Special Order of Business? Pavilion. Do we have to do this? Okay. Okay. Hi. Sorry, I'm a little late today. We have Kids Creek Tributary AA Stream Restoration Project, and that is Mr. Hanson.
Good evening, Commissioners. So what you have in the packet is a agreement. First, this is Cory Hanson, Grand Travers Pavilion Administrator and CEO. It's a three-way agreement between the county, the Watershed Center, and Elmer's, who's doing the work. And this is regarding a creek that's on the Pavilion's back lawn as far as a larger restoration project. And I have Sarah Urin from the Watershed Center, who can answer any questions and go into more depth on the project itself, but the agreement's been reviewed by Mr. Forsyte, so if you have any questions of myself or Sarah, she can talk about that.
Sent around a map, a nice colorful map, so you guys can see what we're planning on doing. Basically, the project is going to go on between Elmwood Avenue and Cottage View Drive in that very grassy section. And our goal here is part of a Kids Creek Restoration Project. Kids Creek is on the impaired waters list for the state of Michigan, basically because of a low macro and burger brick community, which are aquatic insects, and that's because of too much stormwater and too much sediment and dirt in the stream. So our goal with this project is to help reduce the impact of stormwater and reduce the impact of sedimentation. We have a lot of other projects going on in the Kids Creek area that I can come back to another time and talk about if you want to know more about that. But for time's sake, this project right here, it's called Tributary AA. It's also called 90-degree Creek. But right now, our plan is to increase the floodplain, so we're going to reduce the flooding problems that this area sees when we see heavy rains. We're going to add a 20- to 30-foot buffer along the section of creek, plant 65 new trees, and replace two of the culverts. The two culvert replacements are in the orange there. I think the biggest thing that you guys need to know with this project is that it's not going to cost you a dime. We have a grant from the EPA, the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, to pay for this entire project, and we're going to oversee it. We are the fiduciary, so by signing the contract, we really need your permission to do the work on the property since the county is the landowner and the Pavilion, you know, manages the land. So we really need your permission to do the project. But like I said, we'll handle all the work with Elmer's. They won the bid. They were the low bidder. We'll handle all this. All I need to do is give us a thumbs up, and we will take care of it. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yeah.
Which way is the river running that way? Is it south-north, north-south?
So north, north is up, so it's running from the left of the page to the right of the page.
Okay.
And Elmwood Avenue is at the very right of the page.
Okay.
And the, so the Pavilion's is on the north side, and the Grand Travers Commons is on the south side.
And then Munson big parking lots coming up on the right side?
Yep, on the north.
Main lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So since it's running that way, that's, it's going to go across Sixth Street?
No, this, you're probably thinking of Tributary A.
Oh, okay.
This is Tributary AA.
Okay.
They, they're very creative with their tributary names.
So this is actually on the west side of the Pavilion, so?
This is on the south side of the Pavilion.
South side, okay.
Yep.
I'm just trying to get oriented, because there's no direction there.
Yeah.
Well, I guess there's a little arrow there.
Yeah, Tributary A is on the north side of the Pavilion, going further north, and that does go around Sixth Street. We have a project there we're doing later this year.
Okay. Because Munson's going to move into Sixth Street?
Yes. Yep. Yep, we are working with them. They're one of our big partners on our entire restoration project, but we also wanted to move south into the Watershed, so now we're working with the Pavilion and the Commons as well.
Right. Maybe at another time when it's coming up, you know, as far as the planning or the timeline, what happens to the water that comes down Front Street, you know, like from Concrete Services?
Right.
Because, because there's too much water coming through there?
Yes.
And--
Yeah, we actually have a project right now at Concrete Services as well. We're trying to help them with their stormwater retention to increase their capacity to, for when it does rain, so all that water doesn't run off. And that all runs into, like we said, Tributary A. So the daylighting project we did in conjunction when Munson was building the Cancer Center, that is helping out with some flooding, but we also want to continue that work. So we'll be doing some of that work on that section of that creek where it takes that 90-degree turn right at Sixth and Elmwood. We'll be doing some floodplain work there as well.
Okay. Now, when you get to that point, maybe you could come back and update us again?
I would love to. I can talk for as long as you want me to about Kids Creek.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the floodplain restoration for Kids Creek AA Tributary.
Support.
We have moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go.
All right, thank you. I'd be happy to come back, too, when it's all done, and show you pictures and talk about what a great job we did.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Cory.
Okay, we're going to move on to MSU Extension with their annual report presentation for us, and they're all coming up, and I think we have a--
Technology's wonderful.
Technology's great, isn't it?
I saw her.
So thank you so much for having me.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. We've been tasked to provide a departmental update for the Board, and so I'm kind of doing the combo here tonight. I'm going to present our annual report of accomplishments, which we historically do for the Board, as well as do our, you know, in conjunction to our departmental update. So it is really my distinct pleasure, again, I'm Jennifer Burkey from MSU Extension. I think I know most of you. It's my distinct pleasure to be here this evening to really share with you the accomplishments of the MSU Extension staff on behalf of Grand Travers County residents. I really feel particularly proud of this report. I think partly because this is my home county. This is, you know, where my office is. I'm blessed to have my office here, and also because I live here. You know, I really feel like we provide very substantive impacts on behalf of Grand Travers County for all residents. I'm also particularly proud because I feel like our report is very impressive this year, so I'm going to go ahead and walk you through it. We've created a presentation, just, I know we've given you your report in writing, but this way you can kind of see it in the big picture. So, you know, we program under four main areas. We program under building our youth and our communities. We also focus on keeping people healthy. We spend a lot of time working with our local growers through supporting our local agriculture and food, as well as really working to help foster strong communities and businesses. So we're going to start with some of the 4H work that we do. 4H is under the leadership of Karen Stevens, who's here tonight. So here's just a summary of some of her impacts over the last year. So you can see, we reached over 2,200 youth in all of our 4H and education programs, both in our club and outreach programs. You know, when I think about 4H, I think about that it has something for everyone. You know, any youth in this county can probably find something that they would want to learn about, or an adult leader that would help guide them through that process. So in our report, we summarize some of the things, and I'm just going to do a highlight here tonight. So when you think about youth that want to explore science, and so some youth participated in some exploration of the ecology in the Boardman River. They learned about why it's important and why the bugs are important and critical for keeping that river healthy. We also did a lot with STEM learning. We did some robotics work and a maker-- We did some robotics work in a maker space in Fife Lake. We had over 50 youth that participated in that, and they made snap circuits and robotics. We also insist and encourage all of our 4H to give back to the community. So one of the ways that they did that is they participated in the Hickory Meadows Park Cleanup. They removed invasive species, as well laid some ground cover onto the grounds areas, as well as planting some trees. We also have our traditional animal science programs that are, obviously, the animal projects are sold at the fair, and you can see the stats on the site on that, and it's particularly impressive. We had 463 youth participate in the auction, which generated 700,000-plus in gross sales. The youth that participate in that typically use those funds for college or some of their back-to-school expenses, and they save it for themselves for later use. So they're really investing back in themselves, which is what we want to see them do. We feel that our 4H program builds leadership. The children through the animal science program and really all others learn responsibility. They learn life skills that will serve them as they move into college and into the business section, and also into, you know, when they enter the business world. You also can see that within 4H and their sales, they also learn profitability and break-even points. So a lot of those critical skills that will take them far in life. So then we talk a little bit about how we keep people healthy, and we do that in a variety of ways. One of the ways we first do it is with, under the leadership of Jane Rappin, who's here tonight.
Jane is right there.
So we work a lot with our adults and youth to really teach them how to eat healthy and improve their physical activity while on a budget. So again, we're trying to encourage them to increase their self-sufficiency. And in the picture you see there is, we had a class working with some developmentally-delayed adults through Brickways, teaching them how to cook using items from scratch. So being less reliant on highly-processed foods with higher sodium high in sugar and improving their physical health that way. We also do a lot of work in the schools with youth. We do nutrition education in a series of classes that we teach. We also do taste testing in the cafeteria. We like to link our locally-grown food when we can, so in the situation here, you'll see them tasting beets. So the youth had a chance to try those beets, see if they liked it, and then it's incorporated into the cafeteria that month as a tasting of the month. So we try to get them to like it before they say, "No, thank you." And a lot of times, they end up learning that they like a new food. And again, focusing on our local agriculture and taking advantage of those foods while we can is really important. So here's just a summary of some of the ways that we've connected people to healthy food over the last year. We've seen over 1,000 adults and youth directly engaged. We also help, in partnership with the Health Department, we do the nutrition education for Project Fresh, which brings $7,000 in state monies to our local farmers in the form of Project Fresh coupons. And the people that we reach are making, it's changing their lives. Teachers report that children were more aware of the importance of good nutrition and that they're making healthier snack choices. We also spend some time working on folks that maybe are struggling a little bit with their health, specifically maybe with diabetes, chronic disease, and pain. And so Sarah Eichberger, who's here tonight, Sarah? Yes. So she spends a lot of time working with some of our local partners to really reach those audiences. She does a lot with Dining with Diabetes in partnership with the YMCA. Also, a new program that's come online here in the county is a Matter of Balance, which we've done in conjunction with the Senior Center, the YMCA, helping to work with our local senior citizens to try to have them be more stable in their footing, as well as to improve their healthy eating as well. Our goal is, again, to keep them more self-sufficient and less reliant on other services. And again, agriculture seems to be, of course, one of our prime focuses, and so working with our local growers on a variety of crops. We have Dr. Duke Elsner, as well as the staff at the Northwest Michigan Horticulture Research Station, really tackling some of the critical issues facing our local agriculture. We spend a lot of time working with our cherry growers, our wine grape, our hops, and our apple growers. We provide them regular updates. I know one of the items on your consent calendar was really talking about spotted-wing drosophila, and that's a tricky one to say. It took me almost a year to learn it, and now I can say it right every time. But really, that pest is really, really going to become, and while it already is, but it's going to even be more of a threat for our local cherry growers. At the direction of Dr. Nikki Rothwell, she was invited to the Benzy County Board, which is where they passed that resolution, because it really has the high potential to really devastate our crop up here, potentially this year or into the future. And so what it is, is it's just an invasive. It's a foreign fruit fly, if you will, but it's particularly devastating. If you're ever interested, Nikki has done a great presentation for the Benzy Board. If you want her to come and talk about it, she can. But nonetheless, so we provide a lot of agriculture support for those local growers, really helping them maintain their profitability, helping them make sure that they're providing pest management at the right time. And so Nikki and Emily go out and really meet with the growers. She goes to them. She, they do site visits to make sure that they are well-supported. We also have really come on to the, I guess I would say, on to the globe here with our hops production. New statistic is that Grand Travers County currently boasts the most acre in hops than any other county in the state. So this is becoming truly a new crop, a new and critical agriculture product for our area. Our leadership is coming from Dr. Rob Serine, who's housed in Lelandau County, and he is basically putting Grand Travers County on the map. This is a brand-new crop for us here, so there wasn't like a manual, if you will, to say, "This is how you grow it in your more humid climate." And so he has taken leadership, as well as Erin Lizotte, to really learn this crop and figure out a way for growers to do it well and do it profitable here. And it's, you're seeing the results of that if you drive along M-72, or really, M-72 heading out to Lelandau as well. And so you can see that the hops production is going to continue to be essential in our area. There's been multimillion dollars of investment made in hops and drying equipment and processing equipment here in the area. Another piece that we're particularly strong about and feel very proud about is our Product Center work. Over the last two years, we've seen skyrocketing improvements in our new business growth here in Grand Travers County. I did two years' worth of data because I felt it was particularly impressive. In the last two years, we've created 12 jobs through some of the work that we link entrepreneurs with resources on MSU to help them turn their agriculture, food-based or natural resource product to the marketplace. You know, those businesses have seen over $520,000 in increased annual sales, plus $6 million of increased investment. In our report, one of our clients is the Great Lakes Potato Chip Company, and they talked about how the Product Center through MSU has been a great partner for us, really instrumental in securing thousands of dollars in sales by bringing those products to the larger-scale grocery stores. Again, I want to emphasize that Grand Travers County continues to be the leader on this. We have the highest results of any county in the state. So continue to be proud of this and continue to be proud of the Product Center work and how they bring those entrepreneurial, creative ideas that seem to grow so well here in Grand Travers County to the marketplace. Another section of some of the agriculture work we do is some of the consumer horticulture. Once a week, we do have a drop-in diagnostic clinic for folks to bring dying, diseased plants, bugs that are pests in their home, and then we have master gardeners there that are trained to tell people what to do and how to mitigate that. We also have our master gardeners that help out with a variety of things. They are trained individuals that go through a 13-week class, and then they have to give back to the community. They have to give back in the form of volunteer hours that are teaching-based, as well as doing something with plantings or grounds or growing vegetable gardens and those kinds of things. Over, it was just under 2,000 hours that were realized in Grand Travers County last year, and if you put a volunteer value on it, you know, in a volunteer-management way, it's about a $42,000 value. These types of projects that they do are the Green Roof Project over at the Conservation District, which is the only green roof project that's public that used exclusive native plants to our area. They also help out with the Travers Area Public Library, their learning gardens. They help out with a variety of community gardens, bringing that gleaned food to the food pantry. So again, these are people that are ambassadors, if you will, that we've trained to go out and do this education in the community. And our last area are some of the, probably ones you're most familiar with, which is how we really try to foster strong communities and businesses. And I know John Amryan's here tonight, and I want to thank him for coming. John's here, who you all know. And I know he, this is the type of work that really benefits this board. We try to bring evidence-based best practices to local municipalities and boards to help them do their job best. And so John helps out with, I know he helped with your strategic planning, new county commissioner workshops, and we've had all sorts of other presentations in and around Grand Travers County. You can see the list there. Strategic Planning, Sign Training, Right to Farm Act training. So these are things that we bring to help municipalities make the best decisions that they can. And lastly, we also have our Michigan Sea Brand Program under the leadership of Mark Breederland. He provides a lot of support and growth to marinas and commercial fishermen to help work on invasive issues, to help maintain our coastal habitats, and to help focus on industries that are based around the water. So last year, we're really pleased to report that we saw over 4,300 people in Grand Travers County. And we also try to maintain a high-level digital reach, knowing that, you know, just coming in our door isn't the only way you reach us, but we've increased our numbers consistently in our area by reaching participants on the web through Google searches about what we do, as well as our newsletter articles that we feature by all staff in the area. And before I sign off, I just want to say a couple of things. On your report, I know we always try to highlight the very last page, which lists all the staff that provide education and support to Grand Travers County residents. They might not be here and housed in our office, but they're a resource to anyone in this county. We also have the staff here tonight, and I know, I think I introduced almost all of you, but if you could just kind of stand up if you're part of the Grand Travers County team, I'd appreciate it. And so, and many kudos to Jenny McCullar, who, as always, puts together a beautiful report on our behalf. She's extremely talented, and we're very blessed to have her. But before I sign off, I again want to thank you for your time. I'm sure I used up more of my 10 minutes, but I tried to really get it down to the most important kernels. And I really want to thank you for your support and your willingness to work in partnership with us, to really bring the knowledge of the university to the residents of Grand Travers County. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Jennifer or anybody else? Go ahead.
Jennifer, can you remind me what our contribution is to your organization?
Each year, sure. Jenny, isn't it around $250,000?
Okay, because what I want to say is, if you want to talk about us getting banged for our buck, I mean, I am just stunned at the level of service that you provide to this area, and I really, I just couldn't thank you enough. I mean, I love MSU, of course, happens to be my alma mater, but, you know, that aside, you're just doing great work. Thank you all.
Well, we're pleased, and I feel like Grand Travers County is really one of our, it is one of our larger county offices. It's a blessing for all the residents here. Like I started, I feel particularly proud of this report, and I think it's in conjunction with the impacts that we achieve each year on behalf of the residents. But it's with your partnership that makes it happen, and we're grateful for that.
I have, if you go back to your first slide?
Yep.
That really illustrates, you kind of glossed over it when you first started.
Well...
For every dollar that we invest...
I can go back to the beginning here, sorry. It's, I'm going to make you a little seasick here, but hopefully...
That's okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but for every dollar we invest, was it on there that we get $6 back worth of programs and services, correct?
Yes, yep.
So that's six times our investment in MSU Extension.
Yeah.
I've always been impressed by that.
And I would say that's probably low, given kind of the full service, but I try to be pretty consistent, so, but I, you know, it is probably a little higher than that, just given the volume of educators that want to come to Grand Travers County because there's the audience here and plus the innovation is here, and it's really the residents ask us to come, so.
Tom, did you have a comment?
I concur with what's been said. I've always been impressed with the amount of return on invested dollars that we get from you and how many areas we touch, but also, you've always been creative and innovative in finding new ways to add value, and I appreciate that. But I do have a question. Mr. Fallon, I grew up when it was just cherries and apples around here. In fact, I'm sure she picked them like I did before the shakers came in. You know, I did, I got them for a lug at the country club. We used to have big cherry orchards. But with the growth of the wine industry and grapes, with the growth of the microbrews, with the hops, and we are considered the cherry capital of the world, at least we changed that for tart cherries, do you have any idea of how much production is being taken out of cherries and apples and put into hops and grapes? And are we close to losing our prestigious brand of being the cherry capital of the world because of the change of other venues coming into play and people converting land from, you know, cherries to other things?
Well, in a lot of ways, I don't necessarily know of land that's being converted from cherries to hops. I know the largest hops that we have in our area was not utilized for any agriculture purposes at all, so I'm thinking of the, my local hops on M-72, that was a golf course. You know, the hops that are being grown out in Lelandau County, some of the larger plots aren't out in Empire. If it was, it would be a very small fraction. I don't think we're going to lose our cherry capital of the world status, because in comparison to other areas, we're still really rocking that out with 75% to 90% of tart cherries grown here. So I don't necessarily see that it's decreasing. I think it's utilizing underutilized land that we otherwise wouldn't be having crops in.
Right, thank you.
The hops take a unique set of circumstances. It needs an area where there's an immense amount of water irrigation. It's a very water-heavy crop, and so that's a pretty critical piece, so you've got to make sure that that's part of your plan for hops.
Thank you very much.
Sunny?
Well, here I have my Wisconsin shirt on.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, Sunny.
But, you know, they give my daughter a paycheck every month, so I have to wear the Wisconsin shirt occasionally. We are so fortunate to have the agribusiness that we have here, and we take it for granted, those of us that have been here. When James was here from Gov. HR a week and a half ago, one of the things that we did is, after everyone had done their interviews, which we'll talk about a little bit later, Jean Durenzi and I took him on a tour of our community, and we talked about the brown field and the economic development, but we also talked about the agriculture. We took him out to Ole Mission Peninsula, out Center Road. We talked about the hops and the winery, or, well, not so much on Ole Mission Peninsula with the hops, but with the wineries and the cherries and the apples. And, you know, if you look at statistics, and, you know, Jen mentioned it a little bit ago, we are 100 million pounds for every pound of cherries produced anywhere else in the world. You know, we just still are always going to be the cherry capital of the world. Tart cherries are produced here, period. You know, Washington State does probably more in sweet cherries than we do, but tart cherries are produced in Grand Travers and Lelandau County. So we're very fortunate to that. But the thing that I'm trying to make a point is, we need to recognize what agribusiness means to our community. It's not just a historic part of our community, it is a key component of our livelihood.
And we're grateful, a lot of the research that's being done at the Horticulture Research Station to really work on eradicating that spotted-wing drosophila. That's really been truly a wonderful partnership between the federal government, the state, and really industry. They're putting in a huge amount of dollars so that research can occur at the research station, so that we can make sure that we can get rid of that, because it is, it is a, it could be a very devastating invasive to our local industry. And so they're working extremely hard to try to figure out a best way to manage that, so that we can continue to be the agribusiness area that we are and preserve what we enjoy most about our community.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative. We are going to move on to Finance, and that is Jody. Some numbers for us.
Good evening, thank you. So the report that is included in your packet this month is a quarter-end report, so it now includes the revenues and expenditures by fund, so it's the expanded quarterly report as opposed to the monthly report that is reported on the special revenue funds appropriations in a summary page only. As the third month of the year has concluded in these activities, there's not a lot of activity that would cause a special report at this point. I'm happy to take any other questions, otherwise it's included for your review.
Anybody have any questions for Jody from the Finance? Is she there? No?
Do we have a total of what the leftover, I don't want to call it surplus, but what
the fund balance return was at the end of 2016? Yeah, I know it's going to be unverified because the audit's not finished.
Yeah, so it's still pretty consistent with what's been reported in the prior months of about $2 million.
Anybody else? Okay, we will move on. So, animal control was removed, no new business. Now is our chance for second public comment. Is anybody out there that would like to comment on anything? Once, twice? Okay. We have commissioner or department reports. Any commissioner reports? Sunny?
I just mentioned it briefly. I want to thank all the commissioners and staff that took the opportunity to meet with James while he was here from Gov. HR. I intentionally scheduled myself last, and I did that so as that I'd have the opportunity to talk to him about, you know, how he felt it all went. He was very, very pleased with the participation. Everyone was very open and upfront, and, you know, obviously, you know, there's not an absolute consensus from everybody's opinion, but, you know, he felt he got a very, very good discussion with everyone. And as I mentioned earlier, I was after Gene Durenzi, and then Gene and I took him, we were talking about a tour of our community, because you've all heard me say lots of times, there's more to Grand Traverse County than Front Street. Well, so, he, we, the consensus was, you know, I asked him if there was something particular he wanted to see. He says, "Well, why don't you take me on the tour that you would take your new county administrator to introduce them to Grand Traverse County?" So, we started by driving down from here down Front Street, talked about the two TIF districts, talked about the DDA and what they've been able to do for our community. We came up Cass, went to the Hagerty complex, talked about Hagerty now employing 600, 700 people in our community. They fill five buildings, they have two new buildings under construction, and basically, for practical purposes, they funded the Old Town parking deck. And this is on a brownfield site. This is the old Traverse City Ironworks property. This is property that was contaminated to where I'm not sure many people thought it would ever be able to be cleaned up. So, we've done a great job. And then we drove out Cass, talked about the Sara Lee Chef Pierre, that if you buy a Chef Pierre pie pretty much anywhere in the world, a fruit pie, it's made in Traverse City. If you buy Sara Lee pizza dough, it's probably made in Traverse City.
Hillshire Farms.
Hillshire Farms. You know, Tyson Foods, it changes. You know, there is a concern with that particular company in that they're being sold again right now. So, this makes four new owners in about five years, and that's concerning. But we drove out, we talked about Tent Craft and the Britain Media thing, their worldwide exposure. Drove across the new Cass Road Bridge, talked a little bit about the Betsy River, or, Betsy River, Boardman River Restoration Project. Drove out past the Keystone Soccer Complex, went up Hammond Road through a couple of the industrial parks up there. You know, we have internationally-known companies have facilities right here in Grand Traverse County. We don't even, we don't even think about it. Drove out Ole Mission Peninsula, talked about the agribusiness, came back Peninsula Drive. I don't know how many of you have driven Peninsula Drive recently, but I'm pretty confident that I can afford the sidewalks to some of these houses that are being built out there, let alone the houses. It's just amazing that the development that's going on along Peninsula Drive. We talked about Power Island, how it's a county-owned facility with a ranger staff on there and a county-owned campground. Came back into town, talked about the Civic Center. And then Gene had another appointment, so I dropped her off. I drove him down Sixth Street, talked about the historic housing and things that are in the Sixth, Seventh Street neighborhoods in our community. Went to Munson, talked about the Munson Complex, the Cancer's Facility, talked quite a bit about the pavilions and how this is a county-owned facility that the county contributes, not a dime of general fund money. Along the wayback ways, we went through the airport, talked about Cherry Capital Airport, another county-owned facility with no county appropriation to it. Then we drove onto the Grand Traverse Commons. We talked about the cottages, they're county-owned assisted living facilities, talked about the Building 50 restoration by the Menor Vini Group and Cordia's new adult assisted living program that's there. I drove in past the Traverse Walker Monument for the World Champion Cow. You know, that, you know, I had to get a little bit of my redneck part in there, you know, but we had to talk about that, and we talked about the Historic Barnes Park with the Botanico Gardens and what's going on there, and it's, you know, it's pretty impressive what we've been able to do with this and what this community has done with this. And then we went out North Long Lake Road, or Barnes Road to North Long Lake Road, we went to Twin Lakes, we went to the Old Long Lake School, talked about the reclamation of that facility and the reuse, and how exciting this new thing is. I took him to Boone's for dinner, which nobody will ever complain about, and brought him back to town. I think he got a very good view of our community as a whole with the tour that we were able to do with it. So, again, I want to thank everyone for their participation, because I think he really got an idea of what Grand Traverse County is, and at least in the draft information that I got back from him this week, it sounds like he did, so that's a good thing. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you very much for being our historian and tour guide.
I have one question.
Yes.
A couple of questions. What cow?
The Calanthza Walker cow? Did you know about that?
They don't know anything about the cow.
Haven't you been there yet?
We have just only been here under a year, just over a year. We didn't get your tour.
Go, Sunny, about the cow.
There is a, when you go onto the, as you're going towards the Historic Barnes Park, right where the road makes the Y, there's a big stone monument there to the cow that was the World Champion Cow in 1933, produced more gallons of milk than any cow in history. It was owned by the Traverse City State Hospital and housed in Traverse City, Michigan.
Thank you.
And they have an ice cream festival every year on the grounds to celebrate that.
They wouldn't believe me, thank you.
The cow has a very specific name, and it's Traverse Southern Walker.
Calanthza Walker.
There it is, yeah.
I needed some validation, thank you.
Absolutely.
We don't make this stuff.
Maybe I need to take you guys on a tour.
Maybe.
Sounds like a very, very good tour. Good.
Do you have something, Cheryl?
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to move to ask council in conjunction with John Syke to explore all possible plans for the Civic Center, the pavilions, Twin Lakes, and the Commons property, and report back to us. I'd like to ask by our June 5 meeting, and I know that's unfair, so by our second meeting in June, and give us, you know, it's a little over a month, give us an idea of what can be done with those properties, what restrictions we have, what the marketability would be, et cetera, because we don't know what we've got. I mean, it's, at this point, we're just looking at stuff on a sheet of paper, and no one's saying we're going to sell anything. Nobody's saying we're going to develop anything, but we don't even know what we have. So, I'm asking for those four parcels in particular, because I don't think we need to look at all 30 parcels right now, because we're not ready to deal with all 30 parcels, and they wouldn't generate the resources that would move the needle, as it were.
Which four again?
Civic Center, Pavilions, Twin Lakes, and the Commons property.
So, just to be clear, we're just, all we want is information.
Information.
So, we're not making any decisions?
I know, I probably shouldn't have all the information I need, but I want more.
No, I agree with you on that, so.
Sometimes people get the impression when we ask questions that we're actually doing something, we're asking questions, and so, we're asking for the information. Yes, Tom?
We are working on that. I've talked to him a couple of times. We just took over a lot of information to him this week. He didn't know that we had some of the deeds in the administrative office, and so, but I agree with that. I think we need to focus on ones that are more realistic and going to give us a return on investment to make an impact, and that makes a lot of sense.
Is that enough time, a month?
I would think so.
Second meeting in June.
He's already working on it.
Well, Chris is going to help him.
Yeah, right.
You are? Okay, good.
Yeah, Chris is, yeah. We've had meetings and discussions, and, yeah, that's realistic.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody else? I have one thing. Somebody left me a note here.
We didn't vote on it, did we?
I don't think we need to vote on just giving direction that we want that, yeah.
We'll do it.
Yep. Now, the heads were nodding, so I think we're all good. Someone left me a note. Thank you to whoever did.
Rob will bid.
Thank you, Chris Kramer, for leaving me this note. We are scheduled to have a meeting on July 5.
No.
Yeah, see? So, it's in the middle of Cherry Festival.
And it's the day after the 4th.
And it is. So, I'm just asking for suggestions as to what do we do? Do we just out-and-out cancel it and wait till the 19th? Do we have one on the 12th? What would, Bob, look like you want to say something?
I was just getting ready to say so moved. No, I would say just cancel it and just.
Just cancel it and have one meeting in July if we need study sessions.
I mean, if something pops up, we can always add another meeting.
Okay, so for now, is that, everybody's good with just cancel it?
Meet at the beer tent, I mean, that's.
We could meet, don't do that. Don't suggest stuff like that.
You'd have to be in different corners.
So, okay, so the meeting, Chris Kramer, when you're out, if you're out there, I'm sure you are, the July 5 meeting, we're just going to cancel. So, let everybody enjoy the Cherry Festival and the holiday. Anybody else have anything?
And our next meeting is the June 5 meeting, is that right?
Yes.
June 7, I think.
June 7.
June 7. I guess the only thing I wanted to add was that Commissioner Crawford, you gave us a little sheet at the pension study session of some ideas that you had. And I guess I just wanted to encourage others on the board, if they have thoughts or ideas or strategies, that you reduce it to a writing like Commissioner Crawford did and circulate it in advance of that meeting, so that we would have a chance to think about it and not just react, perhaps, to ideas that people are proposing.
Certainly give it to Chris Kramer. It can be all in the packet that goes out for that meeting.
With the goal that we are moving closer to a decision.
So that we all have a chance to, that's a very good idea, thank you. So, we all have a chance to say, "Well, I think this, this, and this would be good ideas," and we might come up all together with something really great.
Might be surprising.
Might be surprising things that we haven't even thought of, or we have time to digest it in the next few weeks, so.
And the only other thing I wanted to add on that was that Mr. Menzel had shared with me something about the MERS and, you know, reaching some agreements or fine-tuning some things. And we were asked at the last meeting if we weren't ready to drop the hammer on the MERS issue, and my sense is that we are, and I don't know if there's an advantage, you know, fiscally to us moving forward and just saying, "Let's do that."
What would that be then?
We had a, Jody Blunkus and I had a pretty in-depth, quite a long teleconferencing call with their staff, who were four people Monday, and, no, it was Monday, Monday. And we have come up with what we think is a pretty reasonable agreement with some give and take on both sides, which is really very close to what we've talked about. So, the ball is in their court to draw up the agreement, and so, I will, we will have an agreement for you to consider on June 7 as a no or go or no-go, or we'll have it before then, of course, in your packet. But we agreed in the timeframe, they said they could have it to us in time to get it out in the packet, and so, you will have a action step to consider, which would be the first phase of solving the pension problem on June 7.
Thank you.
Tom, in your conversations with them, and I apologize, I haven't had an opportunity to read all of it, but the actuarial came through for 2016. Obviously, if we make a one-time contribution, those numbers should change significantly. So, I'm trying to get an idea if, you know, once we do this, you know, if that's what we decide to do, how long will it take us to get a re-evaluation for that actuarial? Because these numbers are not going to be right if we move forward with the discussion about the one-time payment, I'm sure.
Well, we've based it on an understanding that we would have a 16-year amortization schedule with a payment of 5.6 million, which we would make, which would be what we'd base the 2018 budget on, those numbers, and they've agreed that they would hold that. And they also have the, the other minor change, I haven't seen it yet, is what do they call it? The Tom Menzel escape clause? I was always concerned about, you know, they're making fun of me. But they've said they, what was that?
She was, that is true, that I had last one day a conversation about, you know, Tom's escape clause, and they said, "Well, here we don't call it the escape clause, we just call it the Tom clause."
But we agreed to massage that a little bit, so that it gives us some more flexibility and so, but I think basically, for what we've talked about in the past, you'll get very much the same thing, but we will have that agreement to you prior, plenty of times, to look at it, and any questions, you know, call us, and we can clarify even before this June 7 meeting. But you'll have something in writing, the ball is in their court to do it. They seemed very pleased with our conversation. They were very positive, so it was a very, very good.
Like I said last week, their willingness to have conversation is better in the last six months than it's been in the last 15 years.
I think what helped was when we went down and made a presentation to them, they had never had anyone come down and make a presentation before, and I think it established a relationship, you know, which is always important, to be able to put a face and name and work together, and I personally, and I think Jody would agree, that we found them very accommodating. They have their own statutes and guidelines to go by, but when they've had an opportunity to work with us, they have been more than willing to do that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, this is no closed session. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.